How are you?
It's not unstable.
Yeah, I read it last night.
Good.
I can't.
No, I'm trying. You probably have to connect to the Wi-Fi.
Maybe this is what I haven't done. On my Wi-Fi.
Probably needs connecting.
Okay, this probably would.
Yeah, but you can use.
Yeah.
And then.
Thank you.
So I can get my. You're crazy, couldn't do it?
No.
My campaign promise.
So I can get.
What? Yeah. What's back there, sandwich?
I can leave it.
Thank you. So do you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. I can't help it. It's too late. We've got five. Go. Well, I want to change it, though. I'll wait. All right. We're continuing on with Wycomico County Council January 17th work session. This, the next work session is with the Board of Education. We appreciate everyone being here. Michael, I'll let you make the, or you all can introduce yourselves and introduce everyone that's with you here today. Thank you.
Well, good afternoon to the County Council. My name's Mike Stoffer. I'm Superintendent of Schools for Wycomico County. We'll go down the line here and introduce those at the table, and then Mr. Malone will take care of introducing some in the audience.
Good afternoon, Brian Rager, Chief Finance and Operations Officer.
Jesse Reed, Controller.
I'm Gene Malone, Chairman of the Board of Education. With me today is Mr. John Palmer, Board Member, Ms. Susan Beecham, and Mrs. Kristin Hazel, all Board Members.
Yeah. I'm glad you have the blueprint for Maryland's Future on there first, because I know that's a real high priority for the state of Maryland, and really a large concern on every county, I think, in the state of Maryland, where this is all headed.
Thank you. It may take just a moment for the thumb drive.
Oh, it's okay.
Put the presentation on the screen there for everyone. So just to review the agenda, we do have the, a blueprint update for you that I believe was at the request of the Council. We also put on the agenda the state finance reporting that'll be occurring under Blueprint as well as maintenance of effort calculation, just a review of how that calculation occurs. One-time funding was a request for the agenda by the Council as well as state assessments, and then we thought we would also update the Council on just some school construction that's occurring.
Good.
Yeah, you have to give me a couple of minutes. I wasn't sure. Can we take a two-minute recess?
Ten minutes?
Two minutes.
I thought you said ten.
Are there any other topics you'd like to address first without the, yeah, let's do that first while we're sitting up?
Sure, let's go to the bottom of the agenda for the school construction update.
Okay, great, thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Excited to share some of the updates that we have on our two major projects, one a year in and one just getting ready to finish, finish up. At Mardella, we are currently moving pretty swiftly through Phase One of the construction. We are currently, good news, on schedule and within budget. So despite all the challenges in the construction industry, we're moving along pretty well, and that's because of some strategic moves that we've made in terms of trying to get materials and equipment as they became available instead of at the point of need, so we would have them and not be subject to delays. Currently, the slabs for the new part of the construction are on grade and completed. We do appreciate, again, the School Building Commission and the Board of Ed's support of the early equipment package. That's been really beneficial. That's gotten us things like the generators onsite now, we've gotten that, as well as a lot of the MEP, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing equipment. Steel erection is near complete. If you drive down Delmar Road, you can see the steel in the back of the building for some of that new section that's going up. And we also have the roofing materials onsite with installation scheduled to start this week on the roof. So it'll be undercover for, for the winter, and construction will can then continue under that roof. Beaver Run, if you've been past there, you know that that is just about done. Majority of site work is now completed. The building itself has been open since the beginning of the school year. We have some temporary construction entrances that are being removed. There's an outdoor PE and play area that's been seeded and fenced in. There was an overflow parking on the west side of the property that was kind of a gravel lot that's going to be pulled out and finished up with asphalt within the next week. And then in the spring, our contractor will return to dress up the site where it's needed, overseed where any grass hasn't come in. And our closeout documentation is 95% complete. And we do look forward to having the rededication ceremony a little bit later this spring.
Any questions on school construction, update projects? Yes, sir.
Talking about dedication, Matt, when are you going to have the ribbon cutting for Beaver Run?
The date hasn't been finalized yet. That will be later this spring.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions?
All right, let's go to one-time funding. Number four on the agenda.
All right.
So just to review, I didn't know if there were any specific questions from the Council regarding one-time funding. This was a, an agenda item that the Council requested to be on there today, but I can just go through a review of that funding, and then we can start there. If you remember last year, due to a dispute between MSD and the Department of Legislative Services, the maintenance of effort funding for education from the county changed at the last minute. And this $1,021,958 difference left the county in a situation where you had budgeted that amount more than was actually needed to meet the maintenance of effort requirement. So the budget for the Council had been struck and drafted, and then right before it was approved, the dispute between DLS and MSD changed. And that left, which you could say is a surplus, so to speak, at that point in time of a little over a million dollars in the draft budget. So, yes.
I guess, maybe I'm getting ahead of you, but, you know, when we re-sign those funds, or however you want to call it, whatever you want to call it, I think it was probably the hope of some of the Council members that, and that that money would go toward probably more SRO officers. And then you all came in and said they couldn't. Is there a good explanation for that?
So I'm going to go through my notes so I don't miss anything, and I can explain it, but yes, there, essentially, the one-time funding has to be listed and then supported by the Council as well as the county school system. And then that goes to MSD for approval. They ultimately have to approve those one-time requests. So the items that are listed on that one-time sheet there are all items that MSD would approve.
So.
They would not approve school resource officers, because that is a reoccurring cost.
So they, they would not, or they, were they ever asked to?
So they would not. If you look, there's a reference there at the above sheet, on that sheet of a COMAR reference. So they're pretty clear on what they will approve and won't approve.
That's fine.
Was this, was this, were these recommendations for purchasing these items, were this, was this brought to the Board of Ed? Did the Board of Ed ever get to see this?
Yes.
So they did get to see it?
Yes, the previous Board of Ed. If you remember, this all occurred last June.
Okay.
And then throughout the summer, that did occur, that communication occurred.
Okay.
Actually, at a, in a board meeting over the summer with the previous board.
And what are your plans with SRO officers? I mean, is that just, you were just going to forget about it, or?
No. So we're very interested in expanding our school resource officer division. I've made that very clear throughout the superintendent's search last spring, and also we've talked about that with the previous board, and I've communicated that both with the Council and also with the current board. I'm very interested in expanding that. We have to find a way within our budget, and we believe we do have a way as we move forward. We know that for each school resource officer, we have to budget that salary and all that goes into that. So to expand our, I'm sorry, this keeps going out, but to expand our school resource officer division, we would have to first get that into our budget. We'd have to work with Sheriff Mike Lewis, who Mr. Malone and I met with this past summer as well, because he has to recruit those officers, get them trained through the Criminal Justice Academy. There has to be additional training in order to be a school resource officer, as I'm looking at Shane Baker there, who knows that very well. And then we would be able to work with the Sheriff's Department to continue to place them in an expanded role within our schools. And we do have a plan. We're working that plan. We've communicated with Sheriff Lewis. He's supportive of that, and we're planning to move forward, hopefully by December of next year, and having additional resource officers in our school by that time.
There were so many issues that have developed nationwide. Are you seeing any additional funding coming down through the federal government, through the state of Maryland, to address issues like that? Because it's a huge concern for everyone, I think, about the country.
So we have Mrs. Kim Miles, our Assistant Superintendent for Student and Family Services, in the audience, and I would just ask if she has any additional information.
You would need a mic. You can come to the table, you can go to the podium if you'd like. Thanks for being here. I think it'd be easier for you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Just to add to what Dr. Stoffer has shared and to respond to the question from Mr. Cannon, we continue to seek grants. There are federal opportunities that are forthcoming. We will work within those to see if we are eligible and/or if we have the programming and planning for which those grants could be applied, and we'll keep you updated on that. And also with regard to the SROs, I believe there may be an impact on, a positive impact, I don't want to say that in a negative way, that's an FTE in the Sheriff's Department that is additional. So certainly, that partnership in working with Sheriff Lewis is critical, and with Mr. Malone and Dr. Stoffer leading that, we're being well-prepared to move forward when we can get those candidates in place.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. And my understanding from Sheriff Lewis also was that at some point, as that recruitment of additional officers through the Criminal Justice Academy became apparent, that he would have to come in conjunction with us, because we would be supporting that request from the Council to be able to increase his department by X number of deputies, whatever that may be.
Okay.
So just to continue, I just wanted to also say that while we're talking about that now, these were all decisions, if you remember, that were occurring early last summer, and that we were in communication with both the Board of Ed and the County Council earlier last summer. The whole delay was just due to MSD and the process. So once they realized that there was a, this dispute between MSD and the Department of Legislative Services, once that was resolved, there were 13 other counties in the state of Maryland that were like us, where their maintenance of effort calculations had been different originally than what they ended up being. And because of that, they realized there had to be a process that we would need to follow to be able to use those funds in conjunction with the County Council's approval as one-time funds. But those one-time funds do have to, again, go along with what's in COMAR and what is allowed for the use of those funds. They cannot be used for school resource officers, again, because that would be a reoccurring cost that occurs. The salary would occur each year after that. It wouldn't be a one-time thing. But we are very interested in expanding our school resource officer division, so with the Council's support, we're going to continue to look at being able to do that. Any other questions on that? All right. I think we're up and running now for Blueprint.
Okay.
So you have a copy of that in front of you, this presentation. Some of the print's a little bit small, so I wanted to be able to show it to you on the screen as well. But as we have been doing, we want to continue to provide the Council and the community with an update on Blueprint for Maryland's Future and its impact on Wycomico County public schools and our community at large. Dr. Briggs, if you know, is our Wycomico County Blueprint Coordinator. He could not be with us today, but he and his team did provide this presentation and some, some notes for us to be able to go through. And the next slide, you can see the Accountability and Implementation Board.
Advance the next slide.
Thank you.
Those millennials.
So the Accountability and Implementation Board is commonly referred to as the AIB. It's a new governance office for the state of Maryland. It has now posted its initial comprehensive plan on their website. This was officially adopted in December, but the final document was not shared until a little over a week ago. So this is new information that we updated our board with last week, and wanted to make sure that the Council also had this update as well. In the next slide, you can see that WCPS staff continue to work hard on drafting our initial implementation plan, which is due March 15th, to the AIB and the Maryland State Department of Education. So today, I'm going to provide just an update on some of the work that's being done in our work groups within the school system on each of the pillars that we're going to talk about. Okay? So if you remember, a quick reminder, those are our five pillars under the legislation for Maryland, the Blueprint for Maryland's Future. Early childhood education, high-quality teachers and workforce, college and career readiness, the resources that we need to be able to support student success. Much of that relates to both special education, as well as English language learners, mental health for our students, and then governance and accountability that's within the legislation as well. So for early childhood, at last month's board meeting, Mrs. Ayler, our Supervisor of Early Childhood, went through and shared some information regarding pre-K and our student performance on the kindergarten readiness assessment. I'm going to talk about the kindergarten readiness assessment with the assessment piece on the agenda a little bit later this afternoon. But our early childhood team continues to work with private providers in the community. We have to partner with those private providers, because if we're expanding pre-K, we can't, you know, continue to do that without the partnership of those private providers. So we want to ensure that students do have access to pre-K programs and instruction, and they have high-quality staff in the areas of our organization. That's also a priority as well. So it's essentially taking what we were as K through 12 education, and over the course of the next 10 years, adding another grade level. So those standards within that grade level, the instruction within that grade level, the teacher, teaching staff within that new grade level, all of that has a role. Obviously, adding an additional grade level to every single pre-K school that currently has at our elementary school where that may be is a challenge, and that's a challenge that we're going to have to face over the course of the next 10 years under the Blueprint legislation. There's a lot within that legislation that has been accounted for, and there are some things that have not been accounted for. For instance, you have to have classroom space. You have to add an addition, or portables, whatever it may be, to the, the schools that where that pre-K would expand. That's also another benefit to being able to partner with current pre-K providers out in the community, so that they could also fall within our umbrella when it relates to good, high-quality instruction. So there's two, two ways that that could be expanded, and we're going to have to be able to search out both of those ways.
I think that we would continue to, continue to add on to each of the individual schools. Are we going to get to a place where we would actually have a pre-K center? Because we have some of those right now.
It could be a little bit of both, where we have some areas where we may have a, a building that we may have available or lease just for that purpose. We may need to add on additional classrooms at existing schools. And again, we may need to continue to partner. We have four right now in our community. We need, we will need to continue to expand that partnership with the private pre-K providers. So I think everything is on the table.
So you're talking about expanding those four centers?
Those four pre-K, private pre-K providers, yes. Expanding the number that we have, because there are more than just four in our community.
Are you, are you saying that you're, you're willing to work with private sector schools for kids for a pre-K?
So looking at private pre-K providers, such as, what would one be? Stepping Stones?
Bundle Joy?
Bundles of Joy, those types of programs, to be able to partner not only with us, but they would have to partner with MSD as far as how that would, would look.
Are you just specifically looking at certain providers or all providers? To make it fair, because, you know, I mean, you can't just pick one provider and say, we're going to go here. I mean, it's, it should be, in my opinion, it should be the parents' choice, say, hey, look, I want to keep my kid at Salisbury Christian, and if this public school is going to offer this program, it's, it's paid for by the tax dollars. I'm just going to go ahead and send my kid to the public school, and in my eyes, it's going to hurt Salisbury Christian, and it's going to hurt other, other schools. Is there some way we can work with other schools, just, not just a couple?
Absolutely. I think this, this blueprint for legis, for the, the Blueprint for Maryland's Future, that legislation expands it out to private providers. So it is, as we continue to expand, that would open to any private pre-K provider within our community. Obviously, there's going to be a number of requirements underneath the legislation that they're going to have to agree to in that partnership. So that's what we're, we're working on with that. But again, it's very well-defined within that legislation on what they have, what the requirements are for the private providers, and what the requirements are under the school system, as well as what MSD would have to do requiring it. And keeping in mind that we're in month six of a 120-month implementation plan. So that is the idea, as we move forward, after 10 years, that, that those partnerships would continue to increase, as well as our capacity within the school system, to be able to offer more pre-K as well. I'll look to Dr. Rager, is there any, anything else to add to that?
I think that covers the day. As Dr. Stoffer said, there's going to, it's codified in the Blueprint law, but there are opportunities for these private providers that exist, that have space and have some personnel that they can partner with us with an MOU and the state, but they're going to be subject to some of those same state regulations in terms of money. But it does provide some opportunities for children to attend pre-K outside of our buildings, which may be something that some parents would want, and what may also provide us with some additional flexibility as we try to fit another 1,200 students into it, which is about a grade level.
Now, is this, is this, is this just pre-K, or is this pre-K through 12 that, that people could use this ability to say, hey, you know what I'm saying? Like, you're allowed to use private providers just for pre-K? Or if I'm a sixth grader and I don't want to go to Wy Middle anymore, nothing against Wy Middle, could I go to Salisbury Christian or Salisbury School? Just pre-K?
Just, under the, under the legislation, it's just pre-K.
All right, that's, I was just asking.
Thank you.
Good question.
Any other questions on pre-K or early childhood education? Going to continue on, there's a few more of the pillars to hit as well. All right, Slide six talks about high-quality, diverse teachers and leaders. That's a, that's a piece of that. Having high-quality and diverse teachers and leaders is essential to, to meet the needs that we have for the students within our school system. We're going to begin the negotiation process, as we do every year, in the weeks ahead. The Blueprint calls explicitly for districts to increase the number of nationally board-certified teachers. That's kind of the, the level that they are looking for under Blueprint. We are working to enhance and support the increase and expansion of the nationally board-certified teachers that we have in our school system. Currently, we have 22, but we are already on, on the path to being able to increase that with the interested staff members that we have already reaching out to us and us reaching out to others as well.
Quick question on that, because that's very important. Do you get to see the applicants of the superintendent? Do you get to see the actual applicants, especially minority teachers? Because I, I had one person I talked to this summer, she had all the qualifications, certifications, and everything, and she was denied employment with the board, but then she went to Delaware and got hired because she was certified. So we want to make sure that the, because we need, especially males, too. We need men in these schools. But I'm just wanting to make sure that you get to see the qualifications and the certifications and all that, even the board members, because that way, that would avoid the complaint that we don't have enough minority teachers in the school system. So if everybody gets to see that, this affiliate with the board and education, we need to make sure you get to see the applicants.
So specifically, this particular piece of it is looking at what are you doing to develop the teachers that are already working in the school system, and how can they expand on the expertise that they have? But to answer your question, yes, that, applications are available to myself as well as my team. Those are things that we're always working on and asking questions about as we continue through. Maryland does have some very specific requirements, potentially compared to Delaware at times or other states, but those are things that first we look to hire positions through certified teachers in that content area, and then if that's not available, then we continue to expand that circle outward. All right, college and career readiness. So members of the Division of Instruction are having ongoing dialogue and planning sessions with Warwick Community College and Salisbury University as we seek to expand opportunities for students. Think about those dual enrollment opportunities that we already have, but then looking at that, just like pre-K, and looking at that and expanding those opportunities as well. So we're hopeful that we will have a path for interested students who have demonstrated that they're college-ready by the end of their 10th grade year, that they will be able to earn an associate's degree prior to graduating high school. So planning that pathway, if you would, with our community college here, as well as Salisbury University and UMES. Those are all colleges that we have MOUs with, and they're all available to our students to be able to expand dual enrollment under what Blueprint is presenting again over the course of the next 10 years. More resources for students. We continue to be really proud of the additional supports that we have been able to provide in our school system to help ensure that students have access to the resources that they need. There's at least one social worker now in each of our schools. We've also been able to provide additional mental health staff in our schools as well, as well as meet the needs of our ever-growing English learner population with EL teachers and support staff to be able to meet the needs that they have. Again, these are all resources that are provided to us under Blueprint, and those are all things that we're going to continue to be able to, to utilize and meet the needs as those needs change. Governance and accountability. The Blueprint requires that the Accountability and Implementation Board, or the AIB, monitors and reports annually on the status of the implementation of Blueprint in schools, and also the, throughout that connection with MSD. We have to be able to collect data, analyze data, and report data on a regular basis regarding student performance, teacher preparation, and the use of funds. So there is a very high level of governance and accountability under Blueprint that it provides for, that, again, we're going to be implementing in stages and meeting the requirements under that legislation over the course of the next 10 years. So after drafting our local plan, which will be submitted as a draft to MSD later in the spring, we'll continue to have to monitor. the spring, we'll continue to have to monitor that, seek public input on that. Our board will very much be aware of that. We'll make the council aware of that, and then there will be a final plan that'll have to be submitted, I believe it's in June, as we move forward. So talking about that governance and accountability piece, I wanted our comptroller, Jesse Reed, who you know well, to be able to kind of provide an overview of what's going to be a little bit different under the finance reporting system that Blueprint is calling for.
Thank you, Dr. Soffler. So my presentation references the one page that I passed out with the agenda. First sentence is Wycomico County Public Schools. And I just want to take a few minutes to go over some of the latest reporting requirement changes. So I thought I'd start with the way things have always been. And you can see at the top of the page there, we've always been required to budget and report expenditures by the 15 major categories at the top of the page. Administration, school management, instructional salaries, operation of plant, just to name a few. We've also had to budget and report expenditures by object, of which there are hundreds, so I didn't list them all, but all the objects fall within the five major objects: salaries and wages, contracted services, supplies and materials, other charges, and transfers. And as Micah mentioned, as a result of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future being implemented, we now also have to budget and report expenditures by funding source. The state wants to see the dollar follow the student and the reason for which it was given. So as you can see a little more down halfway down the page, the funding sources are the foundation program, which is based on total enrollment, comp ed, which is based on the number of free and reduced meal students, special education, limited English proficiency, pre-K, and college and career readiness, all of which are based on the number of students in those categories. Transitional supplemental instruction is based on the number of kindergarten through third-grade students, and transportation is based on total enrollment. So for example, looking at the Excel chart close to the bottom of the page, you can see just two of our many recently reported expenditures. The first example had a funding source of limited English proficiency, category instructional salaries, program, regular programs, object salaries, sub-object substitutes, and the amount was 53.55. And the second example had a funding source of college and career readiness, other instructional costs, regular programs, transfers, dual enrollment for a cost of $38,985. And every one of these fields has to be hand keyed in. In addition to the reporting requirement changes, we are also set to begin having the financial data from our financial system interface with the financial system of MSDE, creating a statewide transparency portal. Historical data will also be loaded. I've not yet seen what that will look like, but my guess is it will look something very similar to what we currently have on our transparency portal, although I have been told it will include the school. So you'll be able to filter on a certain type of expense for a particular school, for example.
Lot of stuff.
Yeah, a lot of changes.
So as it relates to Blueprint, we're always seeking input. We continue to do that in a lot of different variety of ways, either through the workgroups that are centered around each one of the pillars that I talked about today: college and career readiness, pre-K, resources for students, high-performing workforce. But all stakeholders are encouraged to send questions or comments as it relates to each one of those areas or ideas that they may have to our repository of comments at WCBOE.org. We get those comments, we then take them and distribute them to the workgroups for consideration as we're drafting that plan. I will say that the template that the AIB has provided us is pretty specific. It's not just completely a plug-in, but there are quite a few things that they're asking for us to be able to put data in and plan around each one of those areas, but also to make it our own. It's always good to be able to have public input and the input of our stakeholders to be able to add those nuances to things. How do we go about implementing these things over the next 10 years? The what, I will say, is pretty much defined in many cases, but the how, we're going to be able to accomplish all of this is something that we'll be drafting in our plan this spring and something that's going to be revised as we move forward on a regular basis. Very early on in the process, we've been hearing about Blueprint for a long time, but when you look at it, we're really only six months into the actual implementation of everything that's been laid out today. So it is a lot. We'll keep you updated every time we come back. You're welcome. Thank you. All right, I thought it would be good, as we're starting the budget season, just to kind of do a review of maintenance of effort and what it is, especially with new council members. And then we'll get into, the next time we start to get into the budget process with our own board members, it'll be more specific as it relates to what our student attendance and student population count was in September and how that all fits in with the maintenance of effort funding formula. But today is just a little bit of a review of what maintenance of effort is, so I've asked Jesse to do that for us.
Hey, Dr. Soffler. So yes, maintenance of effort is the minimum amount the county has to fund, the county, the Board of Ed. And going forward, it's going to be the greater of the traditional maintenance of effort without the kicker, which I'm going to explain in a minute, or the local share, which is basically just a percentage of all the state pots of funding that we just reviewed: foundation programs, special ed, English language learners, et cetera. So basically, same concept, just on a smaller scale. However, I can tell you from seeing it last year, the local share was and will continue to be lower than the traditional maintenance of effort without the kicker for quite some time. So I thought today we'd just focus on the traditional maintenance of effort, or MOE, without the kicker. And it's really very simple. It's the total amount that we received in the current year divided by last year's enrollment times this year's enrollment. So if our enrollment goes up, MOE goes up, and if enrollment goes down, MOE goes down. However, there's a little bit of a wrinkle. Last year, because of COVID, the state allowed us to use the three-year average of 2018, 19, and 21, and that number is slightly higher than our current year enrollment. So I'm actually expecting MOE to go down slightly, but I'll know for sure on Tuesday. And for the new council members, there used to be a kicker or multiplier of roughly 2.5% if your county education effort was below the statewide average, and we usually qualified for this. However, the current year was the last year for that in the law. So unless they write that back in, I don't believe that will be applicable going forward. And I can answer any questions you may have.
I think one thing to keep in mind, as I answer questions sometimes out in the community, is why does the maintenance of effort number change if it's maintenance of effort and it's supposed to be, you know, the same thing as last year? And keeping in mind that it's not the total amount that has to stay the same roughly under maintenance of effort, it's the amount per student. So as our enrollment changes, sometimes it may go up or may go down, or whatever it may be. It's that amount per student that would stay relatively the same as the previous year under maintenance of effort, and then it'll be calculated based on whatever our enrollment is this year or the average thereof of the three years.
I think I'm going to need Maintenance of Effort 101. Because every time it comes up, I have to look it up, what it means. You know, I shared this with you before, that Somerset County spends more money per student than we do. Does that have something to do with this maintenance of effort and the tax cap?
It might, or my guess is maybe they put more than they need to. They put more than maintenance of effort towards their students, but I'd have to get back and look to be sure.
Could you get that to me or to Laura somebody?
Sure.
Because I need to know, because, like I said before, people want to know why we don't spend more money on our students than other counties do. And I don't know if it's the tax cap or something else, and I want to make sure I'm thinking right, you know?
Sure, I can get to Laura.
The number on, I guess, the students, are all the students, are they all, like, are they legal immigrants or are they illegal? Not that it matters, I mean, kids need to go to school, right? I'm just asking. I mean, are these all, like, tax-paying parents? That's my question. So how, why not? You can't ask it?
This is Mike.
Not when it comes to students.
You can't, I mean, no, I mean, like, the family, I mean, like, you just, we just, no idea.
Smiles.
I mean, I think it's a good question.
It's a good question, but there's no answer.
No, I think they do have an answer.
I'll give you the best answer that I can, and that is that enrollment is based on the residence, the county of residence, and we do not inquire as to immigration status at the time of enrollment. We do have a very specific list of requirements with regard to the documentation and things of that that are needed, but the enrollment itself is based on the county of residence. A student could be living in another county, attending school here, but would be charged tuition at the rate that would equal that which would be funded to us if the student lived in Wycomico County. Because you're not, as a county, the MOE does not include those students who may be attending but living elsewhere. We capture that with tuition.
I'd just ask a question for the group, Mrs. Miles. The enrollment process, is that our process as a county, or is that a state-driven process?
It's a state-driven process, and we have a team that is very well-trained, many of whom are directly on my team in our central location, as well as those who are in the schools who are trained. And there are very specific and strict requirements for the enrollment of a student. And should anyone have any questions in a specific situation, I would probably be the person who would try best to address those for you.
So the process that we follow from the state is very specific as it relates to where the student is residing, more so maybe than the background of the student.
Okay, I'm just, you know, the immigration these days is really getting out of hand, and, you know, everything's really expensive, and I just want to make sure that we can afford it, that we're not bringing in a lot of people that probably shouldn't be in our county anyway, and we're paying for it. That's just my concern. Not that I'm against kids with education, I think every kid should have their education, but I think we also should be accountable of who is, who's getting these benefits, because there's lots of people out there that go to private school that aren't getting these benefits.
Not going to fix immigration on the county council.
You know, I know, but these are questions, and if people don't ask questions, nothing happens.
I think what James is really saying, is there any metrics in place where we know that if there is an influx of immigrants to Wycomico County, are we finding that this is really beginning to strain our resources? It's no reflection on immigrants themselves, but I think it's our responsibility to say, "Hey," because you're seeing it now in New York, you're seeing it in El Paso, where they're saying, "My God, we can't continue to afford to do this, period. We need assistance." And we don't know if there's anything in place where the Board of Education or the administration has any way to monitor that, to know whether or not we could be getting into some serious financial problems.
And I mean, there are a lot of immigrants moving to Salisbury, not, you know, I just, just asking.
My father was, came from Jamaica in the 50s, and he worked. And from the connections that I do have with people that may come here, I don't know their status, but they're working people, and they're taking jobs that the other people do not want to take, harvesting crops. The average American don't want to do those kind of jobs, domestic jobs. They're working people, they got skilled, you'll see them doing roofing. They are working, and I'm quite sure they're getting taxes, taking their check, whether they file taxes or whatever, but they are working people. I'm not saying we should have an influx, but I just imagine how New York City looked during the 30s and 40s and 20s, when people had an influx of people coming Ellis Island by the Statue of Liberty. Now, I don't think the board would, that would be their place to do that. I think that would be some more governmental agency to look into that, you know? I'm not saying you couldn't keep statistics, but I don't even think you, because you threw the English, that would be the place that you probably could keep a statistic about that. But I would not want the board to have to worry about the status of the kids' parents.
And I think that captures it well, Ms. Shields, probably as an overall description of where we are. We will focus on the education of the student. So wherever the student may come from, they're enrolled with us, we follow the enrollment requirements that have to be followed through the state. Once they enroll with us, they're going to be assessed as they come into our classrooms for instruction. If it's clear that they need, through those assessments, additional resources, then they may qualify for additional resources, either through those assessments or through their performance in the classroom. Also, if those resources are needed and it's determined that they are English learners, then that is also a state designation that we would receive additional resources or funding for particular students as it relates to the needs that they may have in the classroom, very similar to special education students, and the needs that they may have and the supports they may need to be able to access the instruction that the teacher's providing in that classroom, and whatever additional supports they need to be able to do that.
I don't think it's a reflection on the migrants themselves at all, but what I think we're experiencing nationwide is that there's a serious influx of migrants coming into the United States. And I think the one thing that certain communities have to watch out for, if it is whether or not it truly is going to be able to compromise the resources that are already in place, I think that really can be the concern as to whether your budget may, you know, go up 20%, because it is unprecedented. So we just think that there, we're hoping there's measures in place to be able to anticipate.
And as I say, we do get additional funding if that designation, you know, is determined with the students that we have coming in. We know that already with our numbers, we're a little over about 10% of our student population now are what we would designate as English learners within our overall student population. And that additional funding that may come to us from the state would be used to hire additional staff, English learner teachers, instructional assistants for classrooms, and other support staff, as well as other support resources to meet the needs of those students. All right? No questions? All right, the last thing on our agenda, I believe, is state assessments. So you should have in front of you our kindergarten readiness assessments results. So I'll talk about that briefly, and then I'll also just talk a little bit about other assessments that we have in our school system. So all students take the kindergarten readiness assessment at the beginning of their kindergarten year. The administration window is typically at the very beginning of the school year, and it closes on October 10th this past semester is when that closed. Students are assessed across four domains as it relates to kindergarten readiness. Social foundations, how well do they get along with others, recognize emotions, cooperate with their peers. Mathematics, identifies and counts numbers, how do they sort shapes, copy patterns, grasp the concept of addition and subtraction. Language and literacy, how well do those students, you know, have letter sound recognition, how well do they speak clearly, talk and listen to adults, and use appropriate language for their age. And then lastly, physical well-being and motor development, can they run, can they jump, can they perform fine motor skills when demonstrating basic safety and health skills? So that's the kindergarten readiness assessment as those students come to us as a kindergarten. Okay? I think those results can stress the importance of a really good, strong, pre-kindergarten program. And that, again, is the interest of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future in strengthening that program so that students are more ready to learn on an overall scale when they do reach kindergarten. As far as the teacher readiness or the kindergarten readiness assessment, teachers score the students through observation and evaluation during that first month of school. The schools are immediately available in the platform to make instructional decisions for those teachers. The students do receive a composite score and a scale score for each domain. So the domain levels of those scores would be demonstrating readiness, approaching readiness, and emerging readiness. So as they move forward, and then those scores are communicated not only with the teacher and the staff of the schools, but also with the parents and the students themselves, kind of let them know where they are as a foundation from the first moment they step foot in the public school system. As it relates to other state assessments, so that's kindergarten readiness, we also do the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program, or what we call MCAP. The MCAP, English Language Arts and Math, are assessments for grades three through 12. The MCAP, English Language Arts and Math, are assessments for grades three through eight, as well as English 10 in high school and Algebra I. So that data, the MCAP data will be released with disaggregation by district, student group, and also special program. And that should be coming on January 24th. So we're getting ready to see the release of that data very soon. At this time, each local school district within Maryland was provided with an initial student file. So we do have that, it's just not been disaggregated by grade level or by school or by subgroup at this point in time. So look for that in the future. I do know that you'll be hearing from our state superintendent across the results as they relate to across Maryland and also as it relates to each county in Maryland. And then what our results are currently on January 24th, how that relates to previous years as well. Okay, so we'll look for that data very soon. That's going to kind of be my starting point as a new superintendent. I can tell you that the pandemic and other challenges that we've had over the last few years, I would be shocked if that wasn't kind of a result of what you'll see our scores to be. And that's going to be something that I think we'll see consistently across the state of Maryland as well. And then last but not least, the NAEP. When reviewing the National Assessment for Education Progress, the NAEP, it's important to remember that this is a national assessment. So you heard a lot about NAEP probably a couple of months ago in the news and and throughout the nation. This is a national assessment that's given to grades four through eight. It's a very random selection process for that national assessment. And though the data is indicative of what we may see as it relates to the own Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program that we'll get in January, the data reflects the participation really of only three very finite groups. As it relates to Wycomico County specifically, approximately 25 grade four students enrolled at East Salisbury. Fruitland Intermediate and Glen Avenue were included in this last round of NAEP assessments at the national level. So you figure we have about 15,000 students, and roughly around 25 of ours were selected randomly to participate in this national assessment. So that's then extrapolated out throughout the entire state and then each state across the nation. That's where those scores come from as it relates to literacy, math, and other areas that that are assessed at that national level. But it is a good indicator of really where the nation may be as a whole, right? Because and it does align in some respects with our own Maryland assessments. It's just not specific to our county because it was obviously such a small, random group of our students. So that was, that's state assessments. I think it's just a little bit early for that right now, but stay tuned. You'll be seeing more come out around the state.
John, John has something.
I'd like to just add a little something.
I had no doubt.
Well, you know, I'm going to say what I need to say. Councilwoman Shields, I want to thank you for bringing up that difference between Somerset and Wycomico County. And just as a reminder, maintenance of effort is just a minimum, and that's required at any time. Any councilman wishes to increase a little bit more, say like into a reoccurring fund for SROs, we would greatly appreciate it. So feel free to do that. And also, as related to, I believe you mentioned the tax cap, I believe it's against the law to tax or to cap the revenue that can be raised by taxes. However, what you can do is you can limit the rate of which it is increased. And I think that's kind of what we've done in the county. So I'm pretty sure that's what it is. So, but again, anytime you want to put some more money in that reoccurring fund, we're ready to accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
One other thing, just on assessments, also know that we have our own local assessments, benchmark-type assessments. Those are very closely aligned with what the state assesses for literacy and math as well. And that's going to be more at the classroom level. So those benchmark assessments are given by each of the teachers, and then they can utilize that information a couple of times a year to help them plan and know where their students are as it relates to the instruction that they're giving in the classroom and then where they can go from there. So we utilize those very heavy.
Dr. Stoffer, what's the status of the CTE program? Is that any expansion in the future? Or I recently read that in the last two years, applications in the trades have fallen 49%, so.
Great question.
Call a plumber to your house and you'll figure that out.
Absolutely, and I think that there are all, there are many things sometimes with Blueprint that you can question, how it relates to the local school system, how it relates also to a local governing body like the county council and what that means moving forward. But I will say one positive in the Blueprint for sure, and there are many, I believe, but there are some things that I think we'll see through legislation that will be added to the Blueprint over the course of the next few years to account for some of the things that are missing, like the the capital funding that might be needed to expand pre-K, those types of things. But as it relates to CTE, one thing I think that's definitely prevalent in the Blueprint is the expansion of CTE. And under the Blueprint, over the course of the next 10 years, one of the requirements will be that 45% of our graduating seniors each year should be and will be a part of some type of credentialing program like CTE or an appropriate apprenticeship where they're out in the community working in industry. So I think that you'll see that currently we have, and roughly 27 or 28% of our graduating seniors are involved with CTE. That's just because that's been a strong interest of Wycomico County over the years. I think we're we're above many of the other local school districts around the state currently. But we still have significant work to do to be able to reach at least that minimum 45%. And you'll see that work. So over the course of the next 10 years, you can see programs like CTE, as well as a new program like an apprenticeship, which may not require a specific CTE program or classroom, but that they're out in the trades and in the industry, working with those experts in our community. You'll see those types of things expand.
Joe, thank you. Jeff mentioned calling a plumber to the house. You all dropped the plumbing program here a few years ago out of CTE.
So we have it incorporated in our HVAC program.
Yeah, but it's not a.
It's not a standalone program. And that again was at the time related specifically to just student participation in that program. Obviously, if that were to continue to increase within our HVAC program, we see that interest, you know, continue to grow. Hopefully, in the future, that could become a program in the future, but that is where it's incorporated now.
Yes, speaking of CTE, I actually took the class. I went through carpentry, and I actually took the plumbing class when it was still there, and then they dropped it most recently. And actually, just a few years ago, like Joe said, and it is a shame that they dropped that class because that class, like Jeff said, I mean, we need plumbers, and now we're not teaching plumbers and, you know. Yeah, I have I have opinions about that, that plumbing class. But but the carpentry class, though, we build houses there every single year. At least when I was there, we built a house, and we donated it to, I think, Salisbury Neighborhood Housing, right? And I think that's a great, great thing, but at the same time, I'm thinking like, you know, is is it against the law to make money off of selling the house? I mean, because, I mean, the county, the the program could almost fund itself probably with making it building houses.
They used to sell them, I don't know why.
I mean, because it would be less money out of out of out of the taxpayers' pockets if if they could turn a product out of it. And and then it would be more invite, you know, it'd be enticing for these students to see a return from their from their efforts. And they could say, hey, look, I brought this money to the schools. This was me, I did that, you know? And I think that would be, that's gratifying for a kid to see that. And it would empower more people to jump into that program because it's, I have, I have a good passion for CTE because it it really did, you know, form my future and in other people's futures because those instructors are are very influential, and they're very down-to-earth people. And and they're counselors as well. I know you have counselors in the school, but they also are counselors that you can have confidential conversations with. And and, you know, I think we need to do whatever we can to promote that.
I appreciate that. We do have a really strong partnership currently with the Salisbury Neighborhood Housing. That's worked out very well for both our students to be able to gain that experience. And also, there is some partnership there where, you know, some of the supplies and materials, obviously, the moving of the house and setting all that up is covered not by us as a school system or as a as a taxpayer, but from that partnership as well. What we provide are the students to be able to learn their trade and their craft and working with those instructors. And that's currently the way that it's set up currently.
Thank you very much for the update.
Absolutely. Thank you all for your time.
Oh, quick, quick question.
Yes.
How did you land, how did you manage to lose the buses?
So the buses were stolen.
Yeah, I know.
So.
Did they get in, get the keys? Did they hotwire them? Did they run through the gate? What happened?
So they they were able to, you'd be able to go through the gate, and the keys at the time were there in the bus. Yep, currently something obviously as a process that we're that we're looking at to be able to to change. And we'll we'll have that changed in the future. But they did, they broke an enter and and stole the bus in that way. Yep.
The real question is who the heck would ever steal a school bus? I mean, you got to wonder.
They were all recovered, the bus and the the two transportation vans. They were recovered, yes.
Wow.
So, thank you. Sheriff's Department is currently investigating. Obviously, we were working with them.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Want to take a 15-minute lunch? All right, we're going to recess for 15 minutes.